कथुरड़ेय परिसूतनामत्तुक मईमुंदावदा
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
इन्देके नाम वेदभारमागः कुड़मंगल, लव्डल संदतीगल पारिक्कपटुवोदि येन
Today for the viral study let us meditate as to why our generations or families have been affected
कुड़मंगल, सिलह कुड़मंगल पारिक्कपटु पोइवड़ुगरः
Some families have been affected
इलाव्डल सिलह कुड़मंगल सीरलिंदुवड़ुगरः
Or some families have been scattered
इलाव्डल सिलह कुड़मंगल न्याययतिर्प्पै पेट्रुकोलुगरः
Or some families are going into judgment
कुड़म्ब अमैप्पू अन्बरु, देवनाल एयरपड़तपट्टे ओर अमैप्पू
The form of the family has been ordained by the Lord
ओर कुड़म्बत्ते कुरितु देवनके पलनोकंगल उण्डे
For a family, the Lord has different purposes
अन्द कुड़मंगलिले देवन क्रियचयिमुडियाहगः देवन तीरमानित अनेह कार्यंगल उण्डे
There are many things that the Lord has purpose to do in their families
अब्बी इरुक्कुम्बुलुदि सिलह कुड़मंगल उन्नरमिलामल अप्रिय विलिंदु पोइवड़ुगरः
When it is so, some families without nothing they have fallen
सिलह कुड़मंगल अप्रिय अलिंदे पोइवड़ुगरः
Some families are destroyed like that
इवेगले नाम सिंधिकेवंडियन नैरम इदुदान
This is the time that we have to meditate
नम्मुडिय कुड़मंगल अप्रिय इरुक्करः
How are our families?
ओर वेलय नम्मुडिय कुड़म्बम अलिविनोक्की पोकुमानाल, इन्देके वेद वसनतिन वेलिचत्ले नम्मे सरिपटुतमुलुदि अन्द अलिविल रुन्ने नम्मुडिय कुड़मंगलाई नाम मीटरुत्तु कोल्ला मुड़ियम
If our families are going on to destruction, then in the light of the world if we rectify ourselves then we can redeem our families
मुदलाम सामुवेल्ले नाम पार्कुम्बुलुदि
In 1 Samuel
कथर्चोलुगरार, नान ओर कुड़म्बत्तु कुरोदमाचन्ना कार्यते, नान नेरवेटर पोगरै, अदि तोडंगपोगरै, अदि मुडिक्कपोगरै निदि चोलुगरार
The Lord says that what I have purpose against a family, I am going to begin and finish it
मुदलाम सामुवेल्, मून्रामदिगारम, पदिनुर्ध, पनिरंडे वसनंगलाई वासिकेकेकलाम
1 Samuel 11-12
तोनित्तुकोण्डिरुकुम, नान एलियन कुड़म्बत्तुके विरोदमागसन्ना यावय्यम, अवन्मेल अन्नालिले वरपनिवेन, अदि तोडंगपोगरै, अदि मुडिक्कपोगरै निदि चोलुगरार
कथुरड़ेय परिसूतनामत्तुक मईमुंदावदा
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
नन्रागः वाल्द्रुन्द खुड़म्बत्तुके ओर तियर्प्पु वरुगरः नान पार्करो
We see that adjustment is coming upon the family which was living well
एलियन कुड़म्बत्तुके विरोदमाग नान चोन्ना कार्यते, नान अवन कुड़म्बत्तुले वरपनिवेन निदि कथर्चोलुगरार
God is telling that he will do a thing in the family of Eli
अदि तोडंगपोगरै, अदि नान मुडिक्कपोगरै
He says that I will begin and I will finish it
इदो ओर साधारण कुड़म्बम अल्लः
This is not an ordinary family
इसरुवेलिले ओर तलाइसरंदा ओर कुड़म्बम
This is a prominent family in Israel
अन्नाट्किले एलि आसारियनागः कानपट्टे ओर कालम
Those days were the days when Eli was a priest
अवन्दान अन्द कालत्ले प्रदान आसारियनागः एयरपड़तपट्टुन्ना ओर नबर
He was the one who was ordained as a high priest in those days
आसारिय कुड़म्बत्तुले परम्दे, आसारिय ऊळियम सिद्धे, अदिले तेचिबट्टे ओर नल्ले ओर कुड़म्बस्थनागः अवन वाल्दुवंदान
He was the one who was born in a priestly family and brought up in that priesthood and he was living as a good priest
उडंबिडिकेपट्टी अन्द नाट्किले अवनुडिय कट्टुपटिल कानपट्टदि
The ark of covenant was under his custody in those days
अवनुडिय पादुकापिलादि रुन्ददि
It was under his custody
अन्द उडंबिडिकेपट्टीनुडिय अदुत्तदान अनेह तूळियंगलु, अवनुम अवनुडिय पिल्लेगलुम दान सिद्धवंदार्क
All other ministries which were pertaining to that ark of the covenant was done by him and his sons
अनाल एन्न नरंददि
But what happened?
कथर्चोलुगरार, नान नम्मुडिय कुड़म्बत्तुके न्याययतिर्प्पु कोण्डोरपोगरै
The Lord says that I will bring my judgment upon this house
इन्नुम चलियागु चोन्नाल न्याययतिर्प्पै अन्बरु साधारण तिर्पल्ले, अन्द कुड़म्बत्ते नान अलिक्कपोगरै निदि कथर्चोन्नार
The judgment was not an ordinary one, the Lord says that he will destroy that family
ओर नल्ले कुड़म्बम तिडिरंदे अलिविनोक्की पायनपट्टा आरंभितदि
A good family is suddenly going on to destruction
उण्ड्रे निङल पुरिंदु वलवेंदम
You should understand one thing
न्याययतिर्प्पै अन्द वरुम्बुलुदि, अदिल ऊळियन, विश्वासी एन्न वित्यासते देवन पार्पदे इल्लै
When it comes to judgment, God does not have a differentiation between a servant of God or a believer
परिसूतनमिलामल ओरुवनुम देवने तरिसिप्पदि इल्लैय
Without holiness, no one can see the Lord
अन्द अर्थल ऊळियन, विश्वासी एन्न विघर्पमान एन्नंगले कटैय
There is no differentiation of thoughts between a believer or a servant of God
तावर्ण नरंदाल, अदि यारागर रुन्नालु, देवन यायिंद्रुकररागर रुकरार
When there is a fault, whomever it is, the Lord will judge
इन्गिन नान पार्कुम्बुलुदि
Here when we consider
अन्द कुड़म्बम ओर प्रियन न्याययतिर्प्पुक्ले पोइवट्टदि
The family is going on to into a great judgment
ओरयनालिले मून्तु मर्णंगल सम्बवितदि
On one day, three deaths occurred
अन्द कुड़म्बमे अप्रिय अलिंदुपोरो ओर सूनलेके तल्लपट्टुवट्टदि
And that whole family was set up and pushed up into a situation of death
अप्रिय अनाल इवरुल ऊळियम सिद्धे, न्याययतिर्प्पै पेट्रुकोण्डुवट्टार्क
If so, they have done the ministry and have attained judgment
नाम ऊळियम सिद्धालु, न्याययतिर्प्पुक्नेराहु ऊळियम चय्यकुदादि
Even if we do the ministry, we should not do the ministry against judgment
इवरुगर इन्गिन नान पार्कुम्बुलुदि, कथर्च ओर न्याययतिर्प्पै अवन्मेल वरपनिवेन निदि चोलुन्नार
When we consider in this place, the Lord says that he will bring a judgment upon this house
इन्द कुड़म्बम अलिक्कपट्टुरुके रेंडु कार्णंगल चोलपट्टुगरार
There are two reasons for this family to be destroyed
येन कुड़मंगल पारिक्कपटुगरदि
Why our families affected?
येन कुड़मंगल सीरलिगरदि
Why our families scattered?
येन कुड़मंगल यायिंद्रुकपट्टुगरदि
Why our families being judged?
इदे नाम सरियानवत्तुले वेलिंगिकोल्लवेंदिदि अवश्य
This, we should understand in the right way
मुदलाम सामुवेल्, मून्रामदिगारम, पदिनुर्ध, पनिरंडे वसनंगलाई पार्कुम्बुलुदि, इरण्डु कार्णंगल अंगे चोलपट्टुगरदि
1 Samuel 3:13-14, there are two reasons stated here
उण्ड्रे अन्द कुड़म्बत्तुनुडिय अक्करमम एन्न रवार्ते चोलपट्टुगरदि
We see that there was the iniquity in that house
पदिनांगा वसनत्ले एलियन कुड़म्बत्तार सिद्ध अक्करमम, ओरुबोधम बलियनालावदि, कानिकेगलिनालावदि निवर्तियावदि इल्लै
In verse 14, we see that the iniquity of the Eli's house shall not be purged with sacrifice or offering
ओर मनिदनुडिय अक्करमम, अव एन्न विदत्तिलुम निवर्तियाकादि, अदि न्याययतिर्प्पुकावने इलित्तुकोण्डु पोइवड़ुगरदि
The iniquity of any person shall not be purged in any way, but it leads to judgment
इवरुगर ऊळियमु सिद्धार्क, मत्तोरु पोगुलीला अट्टुलियमु सिद्धार्क
They are doing the ministry, on the other hand, they are doing also iniquities
ओरु पोगुलीले जनंगल पार्कुम्बुलुदि, अवरुल ऊळियम सिद्धरुपोले, उडंबिडिकेपट्टीनुडिय अदुत्तदान अनेह तूळियंगलाई, पनिविडेगलाई युम सिद्धार्क तैव्यपटुमुलुदि, उडंबिडिकेपट्टीय सुमंदु तिरिंदार्क
In the sight of the people, it seems as though they are doing the works of the ark of the covenant and they are also carrying the ark of the covenant
इदे ओरु पोगुलीनुडिय वाल्कय
This is a portion of life
मत्तोरु पोगुलीले पार्कुम्बुलुदि
When you see the other angle
अवरुल अन्द बलिबिडत्तन्दिल निन्न्रे, तवरान खुड़ियंगलाई चय्यारंभितार्क
They are standing in that altar and doing unwanted things
कानिकेगलिले अवरुल तवरान कयाडल सिद्धार्क
They are doing disaster things in matter of offerings
कानिकेय अवरुल तवरान उबयोविक्की आरंभितार्क
They are misusing that offerings
अदि देवन एटुकोल्ला मुडियविल्लै
The God could not accept that
जनंगल कानिकेय विरुतार्क
And the people hated offerings
इन्नोरु पोगुलीले पार्कुम्बुलुदि
And on the other hand
मामस्यत्ले अवरुल विलिंदुपोनालुलाई कानपट्टार्क
They were fallen in flesh
अवरुल विभचारत्तुल, वेसित्तनत्तुल, सिकिकोला आरंभितार्क
They got entangled into harlotry
अवरुल तगपुनुडिय वार्ते गनम्मनादोलाई पोइकोण्डुंदार्क
They did not honor the words of the father
इदल्लाम अवरुडिय अक्करममाग, देवनुडिय पार्वेले तन्बटदि
These all seem to be iniquities in the foresight of God
अन्द आसारियुडिय पिल्लेगुडिय कुछम इदुवाग कानपट्टदि
The sins of the children of the priests were these
उण्ड्रे अन्द कुड़, अन्द वालिबरगर, इलाव्डल अन्द कुड़म्बत्ता, अन्द पिल्लेगर, तवरान विदत्तिले कानिकेय उबयोवितार्क
One thing is, the children or the sons used that offering in a misuse
कानिकेगलिले अवरुल प्रमाणत्ते मीरिनार्क
They transgressed the covenant in the matter of property
इरण्डावुरु पोगुलीले वेसित्तनत्तुके एड़ंगुड़तार्क
They also gave room for a harlotry
इन्द इरण्डुमे अवरुलके अक्करमत्ते अधिगमाग कोण्डोवंददि
Both these increase the iniquities
अदि करेश्याके एंगल कोण्डुपय निर्त्तन दिरीमा
Finally, where did it land to?
इवरुलाई न्याययतिर्प्पुले कोण्डुपय निर्त्तनदि
It led them unto judgment
इदे पिल्लेगुडिय तवर
This is the fault of the children
अदुत्त अन्द तगपुनुडिय तवर एन्न
Nextly, what is the fault of the father?
मुदलाम सामुवेल्, मून्रामदिगारत्ले, पदिमूना वसनत्ते पार्कुम्बुलुदि
1 Samuel 3:13
वासिंगर
अवन कुमारर तंगलमेल साबत्तै वरपनिगरदि, अवन अरिंद्रिरुद्दु, अवरुलाई अदकामर्पोन पावत्ति निमित्तुम, नान अवन कुड़म्बत्तुके एंड्रुम निंगादि, नायतिर्प्प सिवेन निदि अवनुका अरिवित्तै
इन्गिक कथर्चोलुगरार, एंड्रुम निंगादि न्याययतिर्प्पै अन्द कुड़म्बत्तुके कट्लेडुवै
Here the Lord says, "I will judge his house forever"
अदुके कार्णम निदिरीमा?
The reason for this is
तन पिल्लाय अदकामल्पोन पावत्ति निमित्तुम
The reason is, he did not control his children
ओर तगपन तनुडिय पिल्लेगलाई अदक्कविल्लै, पिल्लेगल तगपुनुडिय अदक्कुदलुके किल्पडिय विल्लै
And the father did not restrain his sons and the children did not obey his father
इन्द इरण्डु कार्यमु, अन्द संदतीय अलिगुरुके ओर कार्णमाग अमैंदुवट्टदि
These two reasons were the reason for destroying that generation
ओवुडिय पिल्लेगलाई ओवुलाल अदक्कमुडिगरदा
Are you able to control your children?
निङ इप्पलारु नम्मुडिय प्रसंगत्ते नल्ला गवनिकनो
You should harken to this message properly
देवुडिय वार्ते विट्टुविट्टु निङल अंगे अंगे पातुकोण्डुरुके कुदादि
Leaving the words of God, you should not be gaping here and there
देवुडिय वार्ते ओरुविषय उन्निनोक्की वरु, नियादि सरियाय वेदत्तिल पत्तिकोण्डाल, अदु ओनकुले आलुगे सय्यम
Once the word of God will come towards you, if you cling on to it properly, it will rule over you
अदु ओनुडिय इरण्डु कादुलीलु तोनित्तुकोण्डय रुकु
It will keep ringing in both your ears
मुदलावदि अन्द तगपुनुडिय कुछम एन्न
Firstly, what is the sin of the father?
पिल्लेगल तवरसिवदै अवनाल कानमुडिनदि, अवरुल अलिविनोक्की पोगरार्क अन्बरु पुरिंदुवल्लमुडिनदि, अनाल सरियानवत्तुले अवन्लाई अवन अदक्कीवक्कविल्लै
He was able to see the sins of his sons and was saying that they were going on to destruction but could not control them in the right way
अवन एन्न सेवन निङ गैकरिंगला
Will you ask us to what he will do?
अवन एन्न सेवन दिरीमा, जनंगल मत्तिले अप्रिलाम पन्नादिंगपा, इदे सरीलिय, इदे देवीहमिलिय, इब्रिनो ओर प्रसंगमन्वा
He used to preach those people, his sons, not to do like that before the people
कथर्च कुरोदमाय पावन चय्यादिरंग
Do not sin against God
निङल जनंगल मीरिनिरक्क कार्णमाय इरुकरिर्क
You are one reason for the people to transgress
अदावदि रम्ब अधिगमा डीसंटा पेशवनत्त अवर, अवुले कटिंदुवल्लमाट्ठा, अवरुल अन्द तगपुनुडिय वार्ते केलामलाई पोइवड़ुवार्क
He used to speak very decently and not condemn them, therefore they will not hear his father's words
इदे उन्नु सामुवेल्, इरण्डामदिगारम, 25 वसनत्ले निङ पार्तुकोल्लंग
1 Samuel 2:25
अंगे अवन चोलुगरार, निङल अप्रिय चय्यकुदार, अवुल चोलुगरांग, इन्दालुके वेरा वेलेलेन्टु पोइडेन
And he said, "Not to do like this" and they said, "Why?" He has no other job" and they went
इन्देका अनेह पेटरलुके तंगुडिय पिल्लेगलाई अदक्कीवलक्क तेरिय विल्लै
Today many parents do not know how to control their children
ओलगत्त मनिषनके दान तेलिवान अरिविल्लाविट्टालु, आविकुरिय पेटरलुके, वसनतिन अडिपडिले पिल्लेगलाई वलर्क किरुबैतयावै
The people of the world do not know how to control their children, but spiritual parents should know on the basis of the world as to how to grow their children
तवरै तवराय कानवेंदम
You should see the fault as a fault
सरियानदि सरियाय कानवेंदम
That which is good, you should see as good
इन्द मनपोको पेटरलुका अवश्य
This mind is needed for parents
सिलह तवरै तवराहगर एडुत्तुकोल्वांग, सिलह तवरै तवराहगर एडुत्तुकोल्लमाट्ठार्क
Some faults they accepted false, but some they will not accept
इदल अभिषेकमन्ना पटुलु विदिविलक्काल्ल
And these are not away from the anointed people
तावीद अभिषेकमन्ना पट्टावन
David was anointed person
अनाल अम्नोन तवरसिद्धुलुदि, अवन कोवपट्ठा, अनाल अवने कुपिट्ट कटिंदुवल्लविल्लै
But when Amnon sinned, he was angry but did not condemn him
अम्नोन ओर प्रिय तवरसिद्ध
Amnon did a great mistake
अदो अवनी सावक किलित्तुचंद्रदि
That led him to his death
अदि तावीदुके तेरिंदुबुलुदि, कोवपट्ठा निदि तवर, अवनुकुले कोव वंदुदि पत्तियरिंदान, अनाल अम्नोन कुपिट्ट येन तम्बी अप्रिसेंज एन महाने येन सिदाय, अब्रिन सोल्लदुके तावीदुके सक्तील
When David heard this, he was angered against him, but he did not ask him and did not have the power to ask him as to why he did like that
अनाल अदेन नैरत्ले
But at the same time
इन्द अम्नोने कोण्ड्रुकाग, अब्सलमी वरिट्टी कोण्डु तिरुतिरुवाह ओढिनान
He chased from street to street after Absalom for killing Amnon
इन्द अम्नोने अब्सलम कुण्ड्रे वोट
And Absalom killed Amnon
तगपन कटिंदुवल्लवान, कंडिपान, एदावु न्याययतिर्प्पु कुडुपान नवेदुरुपाता, रेंडु वर्षमाचे, अवन नम्मुडिय कुत्तत्तुपत्ति योसीकेवेल्लै, इद पात अवने अब्सलम्बाता, इवन कोण्ड्रनु सुलिकोण्डुवोट्ट
He thought that the father will condemn or correct that him, but even after two years, the father did not do the work there for Absalom, chased and killed him
एन्न नरंददि दिरीमा?
Finally, what happened?
अब्सलम तोरतिकिटे, मादक कनकावाडिटे रुन्ना, इवन कोण्ड्रनु, इवन कोण्ड्रनु निदि तावीद वरत्न
He kept running behind him that he should kill this Absalom and David ran behind him
अनाल अम्नोन कुपिट्ट, निसरियानवत्तुले ओर तगपन, तगपन स्थानत्तुले निकंडित्ता अवना सरिपटुतिरिन्ना, अवसागमंडियावुसीमल्लै
Had Amnon be corrected on that day as being in the father's state, he wouldn't have died
इन्देकुम अनेह गर, पिल्लेगल, एदावु ओर पिल्लेगल सिद्ध तवरै कंडिपार्क, मत्तोरु पिल्लेगल सिद्ध तवरै उट्टुड़ार्क, इब्रिडितान कुड़म्बम न्याययतिर्प्पै नोक्की पोइवड़ुगरदि
Even today, many parents are judging one child and correcting one child and leaving the other, therefore they are going on to judgment
नाम सिलह कार्यंगलाई सरियानवत्तुले कंडिकेवंडिदि अवश्य
We have to correctly correct our children in certain matters
एसा वनसंजारियाहरुन्दान, अदि ईसा के कटिंदुवल्लवे इल्लै
Isa was living in the wilderness, but
एसा वनंसंजारियाहरुन्दान, ईसा का अदि कंडुवल्लवे इल्लै
Isa was living in the wilderness, but Isaac did not look into him
एब्रिडियुकुन्न पार्ग
See how it will be
अवुम्बाट्कि इष्टत्तुका अवन सुथ्थ वट्टाजे, अवन सुथिट्टु वंदु, अवुडिय वाल्कये पिन्मारी पोइवड़ुद
He left him to wander in the wilderness and it went off to his back-sliding
पिल्लेगलाई अदकामल्पोन पावत्ति निमित्तुमुड़े, सिलह कुड़मंगल अलिंदुपोगरदा, वेदम चोलुगरदि
For the sins that they are not correcting their children, some families are destroyed
उमागमा 21ले इन्द पिल्लेगल केटुपोनाल, एन्न सेय वेंदम, एन्न रवार्ते अंगे चोलपट्टुगरदि
In Deuteronomy 21, it is written as to, "If the children are spoilt, what they should do"
ओर तुष्ट पिल्लाय ओर वीटले रुन्नाल, अवने कोण्डोन्दु सभैकुमुन्बाह निर्त्ति, अवने कल्लरिंदु कोण्ड्रुपोड़वेन्नुम्बुदान, पलयर्पाट्ट प्रमाणम सुटिकाट्टगरदि
The Old Testament clause says that if there is a wicked child in the family, he should be brought out before the people and should be stoned to death
पुरियर्पाट्ले ओर पिल्लाय तुष्ट पिल्लायाहगर रुन्नाल, अवने निर्त्ति परिसूत आविनाले, अवुडिय सैलगलाई अलिक्कमुडियाहग, निङल तरप्पले निन्न्रे, निङल नम्मुल्लमय अलित्ता, अवनी अदिले रुन्ने मीटरुत्तुकोल्लवेंदिदि अवश्य
If there is a wicked child in the New Testament, then you should stand, make him stand before the Holy Spirit and destroy his works by the blood and by the Holy Spirit and make him purified
अन्द तगपुनुके तनुडिय पिल्लेगलाई अदक्कीआल, अवनुके सक्तीलामल्पोनपुलुदि, अवनीम अवनु कुड़म्बत्तीय कत्ता न्यायिंद्रुत्तुवट्टा
When the father did not have the strength to correct or condemn his child, the Lord destroyed his family as a whole
अल्लदान पुरियर्पाट्ले तीमतीय तीत्तुले पाउल पेस्युम्बुलुदि
Therefore, in the New Testament, Timothy and Titus and Paul is speaking
एन्न सोलुगरार
What does he speak?
ओर विश्वासीके ओर उदवी वूलिय कारण्डिय, ओर उदवी कारणागिय ऊळियम कुडुक्कपट्टे वेंदमानाल
If a believer has to be given a stewardship
इलाव्डल कंगानी ऊळियम ओरुनुके कुडुक्कवेंदमानाल
Or if he should be given the ministry of steward
अवन तन पिल्लेगलाई विश्वासत्तिलुल्ले पिल्लेगलाई वलर्कवेंदम
He should grow up his children as believers
अदंगादवर लिंदु पेरुदुकादि पिल्लेगलाई अवन उडयावनाहिरुक्कवेंदम
He should be having children without the name of disobedience
विश्वासत्तिले निक्कुडिय पिल्लेगल रुन्दालदा, अन्द तगपुनुके अदि ऊळियते कुडुक्कलाम
Only if he had the children who were standing in faith, that ministry can be given to that father
अनाल ओमुडिय पिल्लेगलाई अदक्कीआल वेंदिदि, ओमुडिय कट्टु, ओमुडिय कदम्मै
Therefore, it is on your part to rule over your children
इन्द पिल्लेगल साधारण पिल्लेगल अल्ल
These children are not ordinary children
इन्द एलियन पिल्लेगल विभाकमान अवर
These were children of Eli who were married
नम्मु सोल्ड्राम तोलुकमेला वाल्दुत्ताल, तोलन अनापिलान नान गंडिकमाट्टावन, गंडिकमाट्टन्ना निविडे, अनान न्याययतिर्प्पै पेट्रुक
They say that after children are grown up above our shoulders, we will not correct, you can leave them but you will go on to judgment
नियंजिल वालच्च पलक्कनो
You should bend them when they are five
अप्पोदा अदा आइम्बुल्ले वालय
Only then they will bend at fifty
पिल्लियान अवने नरक्कमंडिय वलिले नरत्ता, अवन अदि मुदिर वेदिलु विदादिरप्पान
If a child, as he has to be grown, and he will not live within his old age
निङ करेक्टा संदेश स्कूल कोण्डोवरनो
You should bring them correctly to Sunday school
निङले ऊर सुथिकिटे, अन्द पिल्लेगलाई संदेश स्कूल कैंसल्पनिटे, ऊर ऊर आज्युति इदुकुटिटाले, गुडाय, टूर पोइटेरुकुदाय
You should not be grooving about and also make your children to wander and go on from two
संदेश स्कूल मुडिंज पर गुडाय, निङ एरुन्द स्पेशल क्लास अदि नरति, इदलीय रुकनो, इदुबट्टु निङ ओढिरकुदाय
Even after the Sunday school, you should hold on to special classes and be here, should not run away
निङ अवन देव बक्तिलीय वलर्कवेंदम
You should grow on them in divinity
निङ मुडियादि ननिकरिंगला
Do you think it's difficult?
If an ordinary person in the Israel commits sin, then if he offers a sacrifice according to it, then he is forgiven. The Lord brought a new commandant here and he said, for their iniquity, it shall not be purged, no sacrifice, nor offering for it, they have to be judged. The Lord says, with your offering or sacrifice, you will not be forgiven, judgment is the end of it. If you go, if you think that you are going for the meeting, you are praying, you are fasting and so on, but still your sins have not been forgiven means, your iniquity is so great and that you are still not forgiven. Christian religion is not the religion giving money and living. And forgiveness of sin is not obtained by money. Even today, in many Christian religion, they say that giving money for certain things, you will be reproved of your sins. If you go and tell, confess to the father, you will be forgiven. If the father dies without forgiveness of sins, then if the son is going and paying an amount for it, then he is forgiven. Why did Martin Luther resist it? In the matter of this forgiveness of sins, he resisted because if this father is dying and if the son is going and offering offering, at the sound of that offering, that soul will be remitted of the sins and will go to heaven. If the son is offering offering because the father is dead and that the sound of that money, that father will rise up from the resting place and go up to heaven. It is by his own blood that he gives us remission for sins unmarked by money. Your sacrifice or offering does not remedy your sins, but you should rectify your lives in the presence of God. If you do not correct your children, then the family will go on to judgment. When the children are living in a purpose way, then the families are going on to judgment.
Here it is said that their mouths must be stopped.
Or the whole houses will be subverted. Today, many houses have fallen because of mouth. Today, many houses have gone to disaster because they could not control their tongue. They should control their mouth. If mouth is not stopped, then the families will go on to mid streets. How many officers have seen families without controlling their tongue going on to middle of the streets? One word will destroy that family. Some of them are uttering certain words and hearing that they become broken and become nothing. One woman had an argument in that compound with the neighbor. Then that lady in that compound said unto that young girl, do I not know about you? I know everything. In a wrong angle, she is using that word. When she said that the whole land knows about you, that word affected that girl. Immediately, that girl went and committed suicide and died. And that girl had died, will the one who has told these words will the Lord forgive her? There is a bloodshed because of us. Will that blood guilt be forgiven? Dear beloved, you just think and see as to how many families. Whether we destroy others' family or not, our families are destroyed. When there is a good thing which is happening in our family, then we are speaking something. When all of them are in grief, we are speaking some words. When all of them are gathered in the house without controlling our tongue, we are speaking something. Whether we know or not, we are entangled in that matters and speaking something in that. Is our mouth in control? We have to stop the mouth. All the houses will be submerged. You shorten your words. Do not speak more of words. For that, you should not be dumb. Not speaking anything. We should not be like that. If there are godly words to speak, you speak. If there are just full words, you speak. You be delayed to speak anything. You be slow to speak. You wait to get anger. You be swift to hear, slow to speak and slow to talk. You should be slow to speak. You wait and hear as to how they are coming and which angle they are speaking and if you have words to speak, you speak. You go to the court. There you ask a question. Did you do this wrong? Immediately, the lawyer was said, you say yes and you will pay the fine and you can go. If you accept that fault, then you are put a fine and you can go back home. If you say no, then you have to. He will drag on until you commit that yes to it. You hold on to your tongue. You need not speak to judgment. When Jesus came, his judgment was taken away. When you could not control your mouth, then your family is destroyed. We will only speak some words, one word only, but that also we have to be. Some tongues are like the sharpened sword. And they will not speak at all. If they speak a word, then everybody will destroy. We should not be used to talking. You control your tongue. You should control your tongue. The words which proceed out of your mouth should be life and not death. Life and death are the authority of the tongue. And the words that proceed out of your tongue comes life or death. The Lord is also looking at the words which proceed from your mouth. The Lord is watching as to what you are speaking from your mouth. They that fear the Lord, they will speak one to another and the Lord will harken to that. And moreover, in the presence of the Lord, your words should be more shortened. Let your words be short in the presence of God. In Ecclesiastes chapter five, we read this.
Do not speak voluntarily in the presence of God.
You do not say anything after the history of your heart. Let your words be few. You speak carefully. You are speaking one word and caused by those words. If your mouth is right, your family will be proper. Do not want compete to get the word that you want talking talk to. Some houses, I will say, as to why you spoke like this, if you have not spoken, you will turn beaten. The heart will overflow. And to see Job, three of his friends came. All the three began to speak and confused Job when altogether. And they came in, a young man along with him. And he became tensioned with these three people's words. And the reply of Job made him more tensioned. Finally, he said, old people are not the wise people to speak like this. I have been hearing all your words, it seems as to the words will pour out even the new wine out of the vessel. When the mother is speaking, the child is going and interfering in it. When the husband and wife are speaking, the other person will come. Do not interfere in unnecessarily in anything. You should control your mouth. Are you controlling your mouth? If you do not do so, your whole house will be submerged. Second Kings nine seven. When the Lord is accounting for the blood guilt of the servants of God, then the generations are destroyed. The Lord destroyed the house of Jesse for the blood guilt of the servants of God. The reason for the Lord to destroy the house of Abraham was that they bloodshed the blood of the servants of God. You should be very careful in the matter of the servants of God. It is good that you be away from it. Even if you have an incident to interfere in their matters, just flee away. If anybody bring you to charge or speak anything for them, you just leave that person and go back home. Whether he is falling or rising up, he is in charge for his master. He only is the responsible for it. He is the one who has called him. Therefore, it is he who has to judge or condemn them, we should not go and intervene ourselves in mid matters. Jesse was destroying the servants of God. She even chased out Elijah. When Elijah will say that the fire will fall down, she even threatened him and chased him off. He was a powerful prophet who killed off four hundred and fifty servants of Baal. He will close, shut the windows of heaven and. He was such a powerful prophet. Even him, she said, tomorrow at this time, you will not be alive. With that, he cast off all his ministry and fleet. Looking at this, the Lord says that the blood of Jesse shall the dogs lick. Because this is in the hands of the Lord, you should not touch it. This is high voltage, you should not touch it. If you should lay your hands on it, it is gone. It is true that the ark of the Lord had fallen down. I repeat. It is true that the ark of the Lord was caught. But for touching it, one man died. For peeping into wood, a group of people died. That when it was kept in the temple, the whole idol was broken. The whole land was affected by plagues. Because of the ark of the covenant, judgment came. It was true that the ark of the covenant was taken and was fallen. Everything is correct that the servant of God is fallen and he is failed, but you should not interfere in their matters. Whether he is fallen or is rising, he is accountable for master. In hisness, you should not touch it or peep into it or go and research as to why and what it is, you bring the judgment into your house. Nextly, Esther chapter four. Chapter first fourteen. The modica says, if you do not pray now, then the whole generation of Israel will die. If there is no prayer, then the generations will die.
You should not be dumb at this incident.
If you hold your peace at this time, then deliverance will arise from another place. Then thou and thy father's house shall be destroyed. At the time of prayer, if there is no prayer, then the families of the believers will be destroyed. The reason for many spiritual families to fall is the shortage of prayer. If you go to hospital and admit a person immediately, every place will be affected by drips. And there will be a monitor there. And it will be seen in that monitor. It will keep on running. There is no need to check him and he will be seen in that monitor as to whether he is in a normal state or it is addition or deletion of it. You can not see your family, if you look at the prayer life, then the ratio of your family state will be seen. In the past, this is your prayer life increased or decreased. Then the blood circulation in your spiritual life has decreased. Some of them will be in a good state, but suddenly they will be off from the church, they should understand that they have been decreased some way or the other. One person wanted to get off from the train thinking that the train has slowed by. He felt that he can get off when the train was slowing down in the station and he fell down. And he was hurt too much. And lot of blood was gone. Finally, he was landed in the hospital. But he did not faint, he was very clear. He did not faint at all. At least in hunted places, he would have been hurt and lot of blood has gone, he is very clearly sitting. But the doctors came and said that this is willpower. He is very strong in his mind. But medically, if you should see, his pulse is totally down and he will suddenly relax. Because totally blood is gone and if you should add blood into him, then he can live. Some of them will be in proper state, but sudden heart attacks will come, that's the reason for this is they will be lapsing in their spiritual. On the basis of your prayer life, your family will prolong or come down. If you are a father, you should increase your prayer for your wife, your children and for your personal life and spirituality and so on. If you are a mother, you should pray for your husband, for your children, for your descendants and for your spiritual life that the path of the world will not affect you. If you are a youngster in the family, then you should pray for your parents and for your future and so on. He says, you pray, all you and your descendants will die. How many of us are able to pray like this? Is this considered your prayer life? You might say that you are becoming weak and you are decreasing your prayer life and both together will take you out. Nextly, Joshua chapter seven. Verse twenty-four, a family was destroyed. The whole family was torn to death and destroyed. Whose family is that? It's the family of Achan. The whole family was destroyed. After coming into this religion, you should not give four-boll lelusts. Today, it is an empty religion. This religion is to go on into consecration. After coming into this truth, you should not give four-boll lelusts. If you want to enjoy the world, after coming into this religion, then you are going the wrong track. After coming into this, you should come to a state of hating your life. The Lord will give you money. The Lord will give you riches. You should not think that you should enjoy. He is giving you everything in full that to see has to whether you are living in consecration with this. In the beginning of a mission. But now, the state of the mission is he is giving everything and testing. There was no vehicle those days. There was no good food. There was no riches for the people. One-time meal was very difficult. Many of the pastors, without having food, they used to draw away the roots from which are grown under the ground and they will eat it. And the mango, if it is fallen anywhere, they used to take that and eat it. Many of them went away from this training itself without control of hunger. He will somehow escape from this place because of lack of food both morning, night and afternoon and so on. They are not the ones who have fallen in flesh, but because of the starvation of food. But it is not so now. The Lord is giving us everything in plenty. There is no lacking at all. Everything isn't full. The wickedness of Sodom was, there was fullness of food. There are four reasons for destroying the land of Sodom. One is the fullness of food. There was the fullness of bread. And they have everything in surplus, they will waste it. They just cast out everything saying it is waste. The fullness of bread. Yes, you can see how it is. These days, we are casting out everything saying it is waste, if we give it to other families, they will eat and live. We will not give it. We are living with so much of divinity. When Thiruvalluva used to eat, he used to have a needle in his hand. If you had learnt it in Tamil Nadu, they will not understood it. If rice is falling down, then he will pick it up with that needle, dip it in the water nearby and he will eat it. The mother will keep serving him nearby. Even if she is having any other work. If she calls, she leaves and go off. We only know the Thiruvalluva with a beard. One dish was drawing water. He called her. Whether to leave the bucket inside or taking out. She left the bucket like that and went when he called and after she returned also it is like that. Why is he shouting like that, asking to stay and I will come? Our obedience is so clear. When we come into this religion, we should come to an empty state. Blessed are the poor and spirit. When Jesus came to this world, he took the form of slave. He did not come as a prince. He did not, he was not born in palace. He was a bleed up in a kashet. He lived in the form of a slave in this world. Having no place to lay his head, he gave his life. After coming to this religion, you should not go into worldly lusts. What did he do? He transcribed the word of God. Whatever you should pick up from Chericoh, it is a curse. If you should pick it up, you should give it off. When he saw that Babylonish comment, he could not withstand and he took it off. When he saw the gold and the silver, he could not control himself. Demas was filled with worldly dust and lust and he departed from me since then. About Demas, I will speak Bible study one day. He was found in prison with Paul's many nine years. But suddenly, he had the lust of the world. But suddenly, he had the lust of the world. When he saw the world, he left Paul and went into the lust of the world. This Achan took this Babylonish comment and the silver and gold and because of that, his family on the whole was destroyed. After coming into this religion, in your talks, in your walks, in your actions, you should leave the world and everything. You should not give food to the passions of this world. Wherever you are seen, you should be counted as believer. Your dressing should be like that. You should be found in a simple state. When he should be looked upon, he did not have the form. He had no form, no comeliness. If you should consider one who sang on the cross, you cannot live a luxury life. This religion is only to gather cross and not like just a bill, paint your faces and ice and walk. This is the religion of the cross. This is not the way of adorning. If you should adorn yourself after coming here, then your goal will be somewhere else. Finally. Numbers chapter sixteen. We see the generation of Korra, Dathan and Abiram were in a second destroyed down. In number sixteen, chapter from thirty, thirty-four, we can see these two truths here. One had the spirit of resist. He went and told it to another family. He went and told in another family. Like this, a great multitude of people were in the spirit of resisting. One was Korra, one was Dathan and Abiram. In their families, the wife, their children, all were the same like them. If the husband is not right with the divinity, the wife should correct the husband. If the wife is not right, then husband should be in a divine manner and draw her. When Korra is like that, his wife is even invigorating even more and altogether, they are going into the deeper pit. Nabal was a foolish man, but Abigail was a wise woman. Because of her, the family of Nabal was prevented from destruction. You understand the truth properly. When Korra is speaking against the leader of the church, then the wife should have said, you should not do this, this is wrong and she is invigorating him and altogether, they are going into pit. This sin is being told about in Jude. In Jude eleven, we see that Korra sinned because of transgressing by his mouth. And he is speaking against them, is found to be sin and this whole family destroyed. I mean, as they were seeing, the whole family was, the land was split and they went into the pit. You stop speaking against. Because of gains saying that families were perished. Firstly, the children not giving respect to the offering and because they misused it, the families were destroyed. Secondly, because they did not control the children, the families were destroyed. When the mouths are not controlled, then their families are destroyed. When you rise up against the servants of God, other ministries, then the families are destroyed. But outright, proper prayer and life, then the descendants are destroyed. Transgressing the word of God and going on into the worldly lust, then the families are destroyed. When you have this gainsaying spirit, then the family is destroying the families. If so, is there not rectification for this? To make it right, what should we do? I have told seven things and I will tell you seven verses too. Because of seven things, families are becoming destroyed. Even if you do certain seven things, then your families will rectify. Yeah, I will just tell you in short the points. Isaiah six, chapter seven. Then you can see it's iniquity to be rectified. That if you should offer offering, it will not be rectified. If the fire from the altar comes and touch you, then you are. Isaiah six, seven, it is said. The fire from the altar came and touched his mouth, therefore, iniquity was taken away and sent purged. If you give room for the right anointing and get filled rightly in the spirit, then the Lord will take away the yoke of the sin. Then the transgression of the family will be taken out. Therefore, we ask you to get filled in the spirit, if you even sleep in the tarring meeting also, then how will you be taken to Zion or Jerusalem? The fire from the altar will purge your sin. Only by right anointing, your sin will be purged. When writing to Romans and Pauls. The Gentiles have been sanctified by this sanctified spirit. Firstly, sin being purged. Secondly, how children have been rectified. And you will see so many things, but they are just growing on like that. Isaiah chapter forty-four, verses three, four and five. If the blessing of the Lord is upon the children, their lives will change. The Lord says that I will pour out my blessing upon your descendant. Then shall they grow up as the willows. They shall grow up as these olives. The blessing of the Lord should be upon the children. Children were brought to Jesus and asked to bless them. And many of them hindered. But Jesus. Do not hinder them. Bring them to me. From now on, you ask your children to be blessed and their character will be changed. Firstly, the fire from the altar, the iniquity is purged and secondly, by the blessing of the Lord, your children are changed. Thirdly, you should control your tongue. The right explanation is you should hold on to your mouth. All the friends of Job were making Job to speak and sing gaping at it. After the limit, he started to speak much. And the Lord spoke to him. Why are you speaking so much? Why are you speaking so much? What is speaking is wrong? Job, chapter forty. Are you countering with the most high God? Are you counseling him? When he was asked such a question, in the fourth verse, he says, I will not speak, I will lay my hand upon my mouth. When the mother and son are speaking, there is a daughter-in-law who does not speak should keep calm. If we keep quiet, it is sufficient. In verse four, he says, that what shall I answer thee, I will lay my hand upon my mouth, I have spoken once and twice, but I will not proceed no further. To see how it is. This forty, for chapter forty-two, verse three, he says, I have spoken and uttered and understood not and Lord, you should forgive me. What happened was. When the Lord rightly, when he confessed himself, then the Lord blessed him double-fold. From that day onwards, the family went on to bless. More than you speaking and your family being scattered, you hold on to your mouth and the Lord will bless your family. By speaking, the wise will counted as a fool. When you do not speak, even the fool becomes wise. If you should hold on to your mouth, then you will have progression in your family. Fourthly, Isaiah sixty-five, verse eight. Because of my servant, I will not destroy. If you do not interfere in the servants of God matters, then because of them, the Lord will preserve you. For my servant's sake, I will not destroy them. Because of the servants, you have a blessing. Is the four sixteen. If you do not pray, your descendants will be destroyed. But Esther said, let me die if I have to die and she fasted. These days, let your fasting and prayer increase. This is the time that you have to pour out your lives in the presence of the Lord for your families to be preserved. A believer should fast in a week for three times. Because except your righteousness exceed the righteousness of the Pharisees, you will not enter to the kingdom of God. What is the righteousness of the Pharisees? He will fast twice a week. This is his righteousness. The word of God says, your righteousness should exceed his righteousness. If so. At least three times a day, you will fast. You should at least fast for three times. Is there anyone who is fasting like this? You will say excuses as to your word become old or that you have sugar. Even in the times, it is possible with you, you control your body with fasting. For some sicknesses, if you go and consult the doctor, he is asking you to control diet. And the Bible, as a greater doctor, is asking you to control your diet. You take right fasting. One time is for you. Second time is for family. Thirdly, for the church which is dependent upon you. These are the tendencies of the three times of fasting. For why you fast once. Secondly, for your family, one time. Thirdly, for the church and people and for the ministry and so on. A servant of God should fast five times. The righteousness of a servant of God should increase the righteousness of a believer. He must fast with five times. If we do not fail in all these matters, then our descendants will be preserved. Secreteria, chapter nine, verse eleven. Their Achan in transgress. Achan transgressed the covenant. Today, we have to fulfill that covenant. Secreteria nine eleven, it is said. What I am doing for you is. I will tell over the people who have gone into a pit as the prisoners by the covenant. Once you transgressed the covenant and your family went on to destruction, but you have to fulfill the covenant. And your people will not be saved because. They might be backslidden. They will be found in pit without water. By the blood of thy covenant, the Lord will deliver them. Finally. For the sake of gainsaying, this family of Korra, Dathan and Abiram were destroyed. That was found as a great fault before God. In Ecclesiastes ten four. In, he said not to gainsay, but you have to. When you are subjecting, then it will even cover great faults. Ecclesiastes ten four. You should heal yourself, whatever your husband says or your wife says or your children says and therefore, healing will pacify great offenses. How many of you are going to stand in the presence of God for the purging of the sins of your family? The Lord has been intervening with you this evening as to why your families are affected. What you have to do to the remedy of that families have been told. Let us heal ourselves in the presence of this word in the hands of the Lord. Your family is a formation where it is to be united with you all the days of your life. And you are a member of that family. Church is called the heavenly family. You are the member who have been united in the family of this heavenly family. You should not be the reason for the destruction of this family, but you should be for the progression. Let's all deal ourselves to this word of God. My family should flourish long. And the iniquity should be purged. My children should be blessed. Hereafter, I will close my mouth. I will be careful in the matter of the servants of God. I will be in the presence of God, may it be, I should die. Today, with a new covenant, I drop closer to you. Hereafter, I will not gainspeak. You eat like this and your families will be delivered from destruction. You do not be a reason for the destruction of your family, but be there for the redemption. May the Lord bless us. Hallelujah, praise the Lord, 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 praise the Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. In the Bible verses, we will say. Hallelujah. If you are a Christian, you are a good person. Abishya, you are a good person. Amen. If you are a Christian, your family is a Christian. Hallelujah. If you are a devout person, your family is a devout person. Amen. The Lord has blessed my family. If you are a devout person, you should not go to the church. If you are a devout person, you should not go to the church. If you are a devout person, you should not go to the church. From now on, you should be a devout person. Hallelujah, hallelujah. If you are a devout person, you should be a devout person. If you are a devout person, you should be a devout person. If you are a devout person, you should be a devout person. बलन तरिरा अभिषेक ते तरिरा आवी तरिरा Hallelujah तन डे जीवन तरिरा